Good evening. I'm calling a meeting to order from September the 2nd, 2025.
Could we do a roll call, please?
Sure. Councilmember DeWillis?
Here.
Councilmember Dowell?
Here.
Councilmember Marks?
Here.
Councilmember Mosley?
Here.
Councilmember Wildin? Absent. Vice Mayor Coats?
Here.
And Mayor Shaw?
Here.
And we have a quorum.
Okay. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
First on the agenda, we do have a brief summary, but before I begin, I do want to introduce you all to our new city manager, Mr. Mario Sifuentes. And I also want to thank our outgoing acting city manager, Tom Whitmer. Thank you for everything. Did you want to do the wave? A one-man wave? Okay. Yeah, so, thank you all for being here. I wanted to, as part of our summary this evening, I wanted to comment about what a great experience several of us got to go to the League of Cities and Towns Conference in Scottsdale. And the experience was... It takes a lot of us to cover even half of what's going on there. There are so many opportunities to learn new things, to connect with people. One of my experiences was to to be, to sit in and be able to vote on some of the measures that will be recommended in the upcoming year and taken to the legislature by the League of Cities and Towns. There are 91 individual cities and towns that belong to the conference, and huge opportunities to learn and to network and to really feel an affirmation that there are a lot of dedicated people who are out there trying to do the right thing. It's a great event. Councilmember Marks was there, Councilmember Dowell, Councilmember Coats, and Councilmember Wildin and I were all able to attend, and we really got a lot out of the experience. One of the other things I would like to recognize is that I got to attend the opening of Clarkdale's Selna Mongini Steam Park, which was was an event that really extends beyond the limits of Cottonwood to the city of, the town of Clarkdale. It was a wonderful event, and one of the great contributors to making that part possible is, sitting here to my right, Councilmember Coats, was a great help in helping to plan the park and make sure that it got up and running. And it was a brilliant start to something that adds a lot to the community, to the larger community, even though it doesn't belong to Cottonwood. I do want to recognize it. Any other?
On August 16th, I had the opportunity to attend the launch of MyKota Bear Arizona, the Arizona Chapter. My is, MyKota is K-O-T-A, and Bear is B-E-A-R. And what the organization does, it's a nonprofit 501(c)(3), they provide support for moms and children in nato... I'm sorry, natal intensive care, intensive care units. So, it was founded by a woman who gave birth to a child who was four months premature, so extremely premature, and you know, her experience in witnessing, you know, her experience in natal intensive care, and neonatal is the proper term. And, you know, seeing other families going through it, you know, drove her to establish this organization that provides, you know, support and, you know, you know, gifts for these families, and also provides support for families who are encountering domestic abuse. Our Assistant Deputy City Clerk Everett Skerritt is on the board for the Arizona Chapter, so we're very proud of her for that. Her mom is the director and, you know, a very worthwhile cause. I encourage folks to, you know, go online and check it out.
Thank you.
I wanted to add to the mayor's comments about the League of Arizona Cities and Towns Conference that we were very proud to have our own Youth Advisory Commission attend the event. Many are standing here in the back row today. They had a very full day of activities, and where we observed them is coming into the main hall, proudly carrying our city flag, so thank you for that. And I just wanted to thank the city for the privilege of allowing council to attend the event. In other events were, on August 18th, Mayor Shaw and I and City Manager Sifuentes attended the Regional Housing and Homeless Conversation. Needs of the homeless were shared and discussed, were elements for a regional response to homelessness in which Catholic Charities, who is our regional coordinating entity, would implement some of these strategies. And these elements for regional response are currently being rated and will be formulated into a regional strategy. And then my other event was attending the NACOG, Northern Arizona Council of Governments Regional Council Meeting on August 28th. At this meeting, leaders from Northern Arizona were provided updates on NACOG programs spanning transportation, Head Start, services for the aging, economic development, funding for these programs, and grant opportunities. And one of the programs I would like to highlight that was shared with us provides funding for properties impacted by petroleum or hazardous substances such as former gas stations, auto repair shops, dry cleaners, that sort of enterprise. So, if anyone has interest in this program, there is funding available, and they can contact me or Ryan Bigelow with the city. And that's all I have, Mayor.
My turn.
Yes.
I just want to give a shout-out, kudos, to the town of Camp Verde for helping out and recognizing the homeless. They're really stepping up their program in conjunction with the Verde Valley Homeless Coalition here in town. Also, November 1st, the Verde Valley Homeless Coalition is going to have a special event, Walk a Mile in My Shoes. It's to try and raise awareness and raise money to help with the homeless. It is a $50 to register. You can go to verdivalleychamber.org or contact Rhonda Bishop at vvhc.com for more information. It will start at 654 North Main Street, 8:30 check-in, 9 o'clock opening ceremony, 9 to 12, we'll have an open house. And we are looking for sponsors to help with a live remote or even event sponsors, or anyone that wants to donate cases of water for those individuals that are going to be walking. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you. My last note before we do call to the public, I just wanted to also thank our Executive Assistant, Sandra Salas, for all of the arrangements that she made to keep us comfortable at the League of Cities and Towns, which was held in Scottsdale. Thanks, Sandra.
Madam Mayor, if I can add, I'm sorry, if I can add some comments. For the summary of events, I wanted to notify the council and public. We have an Airport Commission meeting tomorrow at 6:00 PM here in the City Council Chambers. The public is invited to attend the Old Town Music and Market at the Old Town Activity Park. That's commencing this Friday after taking August off. This Friday will be the Blue Agave Trio. We hope everyone will come out and bring the family for a fun time in Old Town. The Cottonwood Fire Department will host its annual 9/11 Walk. On Thursday, September 11th, from 7:00 AM to 9:00 AM, the public is invited to join us in honoring the first responders who were lost on that day. Thunder Valley Rally is set to return to Cottonwood on September 19th and 20th, featuring musical headliners Chase McDaniel on Friday and Puddle of Mud on Saturday. Tickets are available for purchase at $20 or $40 for a weekend pass. To buy your tickets, visit thundervalleyrallyaz.com. I purchased mine already, so I'm looking forward to attending. Also, this Saturday, September 6th, the Special Olympics of Arizona will be held at the Cottonwood Aquatic Center. We invite everyone to come out, support the athletes, as they showcase their hard work, dedication, and sportsmanship. Setup starts at 6:00 AM. The meet begins at 7:00 AM. And then lastly, the Mingus Union High School Swim Team will host their first home meet of the season at the Aquatic Center this Thursday, September 4th, begins at 4:00 PM. And just lastly, I just want to thank council again for giving me the opportunity to lead the organization. It's been a hectic first couple of weeks. I enjoyed starting it out with you folks at the league, learned a lot. Just, it was great to see the rural focus this year at the league on all of the sessions and the speakers providing some information that really will kind of help guide our staff for the next year to come. But again, just thank you very much.
Okay. Thank you, everyone. Next is Call to the Public. The public may address the council on matters directly relating to city business that are not listed on the agenda during the call to the public by submitting a written request to speak form to the city clerk no later than the conclusion of the information reports, updates portion of the agenda. There is a three-minute timeframe per speaker, and all comments shall be addressed to the council as a whole and not to any member thereof, staff, or audience. The mayor may direct a speaker to stop speaking and leave the podium or adjourn the meeting if anyone becomes disorderly or uncivil, makes personal attacks against any person or persons, or if the mayor determines that the speaker is speaking about items that are outside the city's legal authority to act. First, I have Ray, I'm not sure what your last name is, but if you would like to come forward? No, it's Ray. Taken?
Hello?
Thank you. Thank you, Polina, and welcome me. I'm from Highland Square down here on Mingus Avenue. And the reason I come down this evening is very simple. We're asking for one little favor from the city. Can we have, right now, we have one sign cleared out by the stoplight on the end of Mingus that says, "No engine breaks allowed." The loud engine brakes on these trucks, this summer, they were coming through at 1:00 in the morning with them on and waking everybody up. Could we put two signs down on Mingus just to remind them? Maybe one before Highland Square and one down by the roundabout? This is, I'm speaking for the management and all the residents there. And I'm sure some of the other apartment buildings and some of the other residents would like to see the same thing done. I'm trying to do it the easy way. Let's just, a few signs, maybe it'll remind them. And that, okay? I appreciate it very much, and thank you.
Thank you for speaking to us. Next is Stacy Bray regarding the hockey rink.
Hi, thank you for having me. I was in last council meeting in August, the beginning of August. I was looking for information regarding the budget to repair the hockey rink, the surface there. I did find out after speaking with Mrs. or Ms. Coats that the money was absorbed back into the general funds because the contractor putting in that bid just didn't follow through with the work. In our conversation, we kind of toyed with some ideas about possibly having a citizen donation and possibly City Works completing the work. But after some time, I did a little research, and I do not think that the original bid was unaffordable for Cottonwood to make do on that bid and go back into the budget somehow, do some civic magic, and maybe make that happen with the City Works Department actually providing the work, the labor, as well as the supplies. I think it was less than $7,000. I know that's nothing compared to what the city has in their budget, but I know it could be a pain to try to find that money. So, that's all I'm asking, is if you could kind of figure out how to make do on that. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, now, Rainey, it's you.
Good evening, Mayor, Council. My name is Rainey Shower. I live in Clarkdale, but I work here in Cottonwood. I'm here today to present a concern to the city council. I attend most of these meetings, and I'm not sure I've heard anybody speak on the Flock safety cameras. These have been installed at 11 locations across the city of Cottonwood, and first, I'd just like to start with this caption from the Verde Independent. Smile at the three cameras that are perched on State Route 89A and Cornville Road. ADOT only uses traffic cameras in Cottonwood for the sole purpose of monitoring traffic conditions. Cottonwood Police Department utilizes automated license plate reader camera systems. These Flock Falcon cameras are used to read license plates, identify strange vehicle traffic patterns, and flag plates. With grants from the Arizona Department of Homeland Security and the Arizona Automobile Theft Authority, the city of Cottonwood had 11 Flock camera systems installed at various locations throughout the city. Here's the main issue with the cameras. They're not actually owned by the city of Cottonwood, or Sedona, or Flagstaff, or wherever they've been placed. These are rented from a tech company that promises 24-hour AI surveillance. The newer version that's about to roll out promises one click to one case solved. It's not just government agencies that can acquire cameras on this network, and the data has been subject to leaks before. The issue is not public, it's not public safety. Nobody wants more unsafe roads. But the cameras are here to take data that your car passes by the Old Town Market at 7:50 AM, and then the Food City at 8:02, and then the Fry's at 8:04, so McDonald's can send you, "Hey, did you remember breakfast at 7:45?" Or so it can record that every time you drive by a couple miles an hour over the speed limit, they can package that, sell it to GEICO, and they make a lot of money. And the big issue is that the data brokers that purchase this data pay top dollar, enough that companies like Flock don't have to pay the price for what they do. Selling the data is so much more profitable than the government fines that come from selling the data. I urge the public to consider their data rights and fight back, and I urge the city of Cottonwood to reconsider the use of these cameras and speak with Flagstaff and Sedona on their efforts to remove them. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, that's the end of Call to the Public. Our next our next item is the approval of the minutes of the regular meeting from August 5th, 2025.
I'll move to approve the minutes of the regular meeting of August 5th, 2025.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Under Unfinished Business, first, we have Consideration and Possible Adoption of Resolution Number 3353, Appointment of Beth Kennedy to the Planning and Zoning Commission, Establishing Her Term of Office and Administration of the Oath of Office.
Good evening, Council. Tammy Mager, City Clerk. Today, I'm before you to present some appointments. I would like, first of all, I would like to address both matters under unfinished business together, if that would be okay with council. Also, I would like to introduce maybe a new approach to presenting potential candidates for all of our commissions. And what's new about this is, I would like to, after your action is taken, one way or the other, if they are appointed, I would like to get them sworn in before council, if that would be okay with council. Okay. As you know, the Planning and Zoning Commission consists of seven Cottonwood residents appointed by the city council, two of which must have design-related background such as architecture, planning, interior design, or fine arts, and commissioners serve staggered three-year terms. We had four vacancies on the Planning and Zoning Commission. The positions were advertised through social media, printed flyers, and our website, and public service announcements. We received four applications for open positions. Therefore, none of the Therefore, none of these applications went through the blind review process, as you know. All of these applicants were interviewed by council on August 5th, and two of the applicants are current commissioners sitting on the Planning and Zoning Commission currently and are being recommended for reappointment under the consent agenda for that reason. Following the interviews by council, Ms. Kennedy was recommended by a majority of council for appointment. She does meet all of the qualifications for appointment, and staff is recommending her appointment for a full three-year term, beginning this evening and ending September 2nd of 2028. Ms. Hellman was also recommended by council, by a majority of council, and she also meets all of the qualifications of the position. Staff is recommending her appointment for a partial term, beginning this evening and ending February 5th of 2028. This position is due to the resignation of a current P&amp;Z commissioner, and his term was up in February of 2028. That's why it's a partial. These are, appointments are essential to maintaining the commission's full membership and ensuring its continued operation in accordance with city code. There's no cost associated with these appointments, and so I am recommending that they both be appointed this evening and that we could swear them in after your action. So with that, I thank you, and I'll leave it with your discussion and consideration.
Okay. And is there, I'll also read the second one, if I may. Consideration and possible adoption of Resolution Number 3358, appointment of Kathy Hellman to the Planning and Zoning Commission, establishing her term of office and administration of the oath of office. I'll accept motions to approve each of these separately if there isn't any further discussion. If there is, now is the time, so. Are there any comments about either of these candidates for Planning and Zoning? Hearing none? Would, one of you like to make a motion?
I'll make the motion to approve Resolution Number 3353, the appointment of Beth Kennedy to the Planning and Zoning Commission, establishing her term of office and administration of the oath of office.
Okay. All in favor? You need a second.
I second.
Oh, yes. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Next is a motion for Resolution 3358, the appointment of Kathy Hellman.
So I move to adopt Resolution Number 3358, appointing Kathy Hellman, a member of the Planning and Zoning Commission, and establishing her term of office.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, council. If I could have Ms. Hellman and Ms. Kennedy come forward.
I say, "Kathy."
Aye, Kathy.
Do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution.
Do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States.
Have a Constitution of laws.
And the Constitution of laws.
Of the state of Arizona.
Of the state of Arizona.
And will support the city code.
And will support the city code.
And laws of the city of Cottonwood. That I will bear true faith and allegiance to the same. And defend them against all enemies.
And defend them against all enemies.
Foreign and domestic.
Foreign and domestic.
And that I will faithfully and impartially discharge the duties.
And that I will faithfully and impartially discharge the duties.
Of the Planning and Zoning Commissioner.
Of the Planning and Zoning Commissioner.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my abilities.
I surrender.
I surrender.
If I could get you both to sign your...
Okay. Is this on the website?
It's what?
Is this on the website?
It's not on the website, but I have a copy for you, too. And if I could get this one for you, wait a minute. Okay, you have time?
And Ms. Mace, would you like to sign and present the certificates?
Yes.
Could you wait for just a second, please?
Thank you, ma'am. I have some certificates for you as well.
Thank you. This is a certificate of appointment of Planning and Zoning Commissioner. Thank you.
And I thank you both very much. Thank you for your interest in the Planning and Zoning Commission. Okay, next is the consent agenda. We have nine items on the consent agenda. The following items are considered to be routine and non-controversial by the council and will be approved by one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless a council member or a citizen so requests, in which case the item will be removed from the consent agenda and considered in its normal sequence on the agenda. I'll go ahead and read these items to you, and we'll go back and look at any that have a question attached. I know I have a couple of questions. Number one, New Series 007 Beer and Wine Bar Liquor License Application submitted by Camilla Alarcon, agent for the Pine Shadows Clubhouse located at 2050 West State Route 89A. Number two, Resolution Numbers 3354 and 3355, reappointment of members to the Planning and Zoning Commission and establishing their terms of office. Number three, Resolution Number 3359, a resolution of the mayor and city council of the city of Cottonwood, Arizona, reappointing E. Lynn Royerden, I can't say Royerden, well, I'm sorry, as an associate city magistrate and establishing her term of office. Resolution four is Resolution Number 3360, a resolution of the mayor and city council of the city of Cottonwood, Yavapai County, Arizona, approving certain Yavapai County Superior Court-appointed justices of the peace pro tempore to serve as magistrates pro tempore in the Cottonwood Municipal Court as needed. Five, Resolution Number 3361, a resolution of the mayor and city council of the city of Cottonwood, Arizona, approving and authorizing the mayor to execute an intergovernmental agreement with the state... Am I reading the wrong list? Am I doing, I'm okay? Of Arizona, accepting the state appropriation in the amount of $1 million for the Main Street pavement rehabilitation and sidewalk improvement project. Number six, consideration and possible approval of Task Order Number Six for the Segment and Circle and Primary Windsock Relocation Construction Management Services with Diblin Associates Consulting Engineers Incorporated in an amount not to exceed $57,508. Seven, consideration and possible approval of award of the contract resulting from the invitation for bids FY25-AP-01 Segment and Circle and Primary Windsock Relocation to PaveX Corporation in an amount not to exceed $207,378. Eight is consideration and approval to waive the procurement policy to allow for a sole source purchase of ferret chloride from Hill Brothers Chemical Company in an amount not to exceed $77,500 for fiscal year 2026. And last but not least, as my voice fails me, number nine, consideration and possible approval to waive the procurement policy to allow for a sole source purchase of clarifloc polymer from Polydine Incorporated in an amount not to exceed $75,000. Within the consent agenda, I do have a request to look at numbers six and seven. I also, I have a question, just a point of clarification for number one, if I may. I'm just trying to understand how the liquor license applies to the Pine Shadows Clubhouse. How does that work?
Good evening again. So I do have the applicant on Zoom this evening to answer any questions that you may have on this item. This matter, the clerk's office, I don't know, is this being pulled from the consent agenda for further discussion? Or...
It's, well, I'm, I just wanted to ask a question while there was an opportunity to...
Would you like to ask it of...
I'm not, I really don't have any objection to it. I'm just trying to understand how it works for a clubhouse of this type.
Well, I will let Ms. Alarcon answer that question, but I do believe they already have a liquor license, and this particular liquor license is specifically because they have new members to an LLC, or they're dropping some members, and that's all this is, is for an acquisition of control, is what this one is for.
I was just going to expand on that a little bit, Mayor. Councilmember Willis had asked a similar question earlier today. The clerk and the executive assistant looked into it, and ultimately, what we discovered was there was a change in the ownership of the various LLCs, and so the state requires that they amend their liquor license and kind of go through the process just to identify the proper owners of the LLC on the license, but they have had their liquor license already. This is simply changing the ownership officially on it.
Okay. Well, you know, for some of the things in the city, we do this, we will issue a liquor license on an event-by-event basis, not as a blanket, and that's why I was just trying to understand. Is this, is there oversight of what's going on on the premises? Or is this just for private parties? I just didn't understand how it worked.
Yeah, I'm not familiar specifically with how the operation runs, but I think these are typical in some of the clubhouses that you see for them to have gatherings and events. They need a beer and wine license, and, you know, obviously, Chief Rudin's here, I think if there were any concerns, he could speak to that, but generally, licenses like this aren't maintained if they have any interaction with law enforcement or any violations, so one would have to assume that it's in good standing. This is simply just to amend the ownership of the license.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you for the clarification.
And Madam Mayor, I don't have a, again, I don't want, actually pull, but I do want to recognize the city for work on one of the items that's on the consent agenda. Should, I'm just looking to Mr. Gaylord, if he nods his head, that's okay, make a compliment or...
Mayor, Councilmember Marx, it's legally okay. It's up to the mayor as the...
Okay. Yes, it's okay.
The chief of police is in the back, and I just want to make sure. But, you know, Resolution 3361 authorizes the mayor to execute an agreement with the state of Arizona Department of Transportation for an appropriation in the amount of $1 million for the Main Street preservation and sidewalk improvement project. And the city, and I want to recognize, you know, Acting City Manager Whitmer and, you know, the city staff who is involved on this, applied through the Northern Arizona Council of Governments for this appropriation. The projects were included in a state bill, a House bill. However, the 16 projects recommended by the council of government, only the city of Cottonwood's project received an appropriation in the state's final budget, and that's a reflection of the work of the city staff and Acting City Manager Whitmer in working with, you know, our elected representatives, Representative Bliss and Winn, and we appreciate, you know, our representative's support on this also. That million dollars, along with an appropriate, with, I'm sorry, the million-dollar appropriation and a transportation alternatives grant, reduced the city's general fund commitment to the Main Street preservation and sidewalk improvement project by a total of approximately $2.5 million. And that's big, that's huge, that's money that the city keeps, and I just want to recognize, you know, the city for that great work.
Yeah, thank you.
Are you ready for a motion?
Nope, sorry. But wait, there's more. Yeah, I do have a request from Mr. Wagnon to pull items six and seven from the consent agenda.
Mayor, I can make a motion to approve all of them except for six and seven, and we can pull six and seven and go from there, if you're okay with that.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Mr. Wagnon, do you have a comment to make on item six and seven?
Thank you, Mayor and council members. Item six and seven, I'm going to speak to both of them at the same time since they're dependent on, one is the engineering and one is the actual work to relocate the windsock, so I'll address them both at the same time, save us time. Right now, our center line from our runway to the center line of our taxiway is 240 feet, and that's exactly what the FAA requires. And that is for what is called Group One aircraft. Those are the small aircraft that we see flying around. They're under 12,500 pounds. They're typically what the flight schools use, those type of aircraft. They need a runway that we meet, 4,250 feet, which were good for those small Group One aircraft. If we want to get Group Two aircraft to land here, which are from 12,500 pounds to 22,000 pounds, which you would identify as small, private business jets in, let's see, like a King Air, a Citation, XLS, a Mustang, those type of jets that weigh up to 22,000 pounds, we would need to move our taxiway about 60 feet farther away from the runway. So the center line of the taxiway and the center line of the runway needs to be at least 300 feet in order for those larger jets, those jets, small, medium-sized jets to land here. Now, when you look at, what the problem is, is that when you look at moving the taxiway, what happens is it conflicts with the current location of the windsock. So we can't move it without moving the windsock first. So this effort to move the windsock is directly tied to extending and strengthening the runway so that these larger 22,000-pound jets can land here, so we can move and separate the runway from the taxiway. So I'm asking you... so the center line of the taxiway and the center line of the runway needs to be at least 300 feet in order for those larger jets, those jets, small, medium-sized jets to land here. Now, when you look at, what the problem is, is that when you look at moving the taxiway, what happens is it conflicts with the current location of the windsock. So we can't move it without moving the windsock first. So this effort to move the windsock is directly tied to extending and strengthening the runway so that these larger 22,000-pound jets can land here, so we can move and separate the runway from the taxiway. So, I'm asking you that, you may not have been informed that this is one step in that process to lengthen and strengthen the runway, and I have brought with me Chapter Five of the Implementation Plan and Financial Analysis for the Cottonwood Municipal Airport Master Plan. Page 5.1, down towards the bottom, it says, "Design, construct runway 1432, extension, strengthening, and reconstruction." So in our plan, we're planning on lengthening the runway. The next page, 5.2, it says we need to lower one of the fences to get it out of the way of the jets that are coming in, the fences are about six foot tall, and we're going to have to-
Mr. Wagnan, I'm sorry, but time's up, and if we could, if, Mr. Probst, if you would like to address that, come on up, and we'll hear what your response is to Mr. Wagnan's assertions.
Madam Mayor, Councilmember DeWilles, City's Airport Manager. Moving a windsock has absolutely nothing to do with the taxiway project in the future or the runway project to extend the runway. It is an obstruction, it's 19 feet too high, it simply will eliminate this obstruction. It has nothing to do with the runway, nothing to do with the taxiway. By the way, the taxiway program, I reviewed it at 100% today, center line to center line is 150 feet. The 100% plans have no indication of moving it any farther, and we're already getting business jets, by the way. I would be happy to answer any questions.
Are there any?
Are there any safety issues involved in where the windsock segmented circle are currently?
It's 19 feet too high, and it needs to be lowered, and that, the hill that it sits on, it needs to be brought down to grade. That's not part of moving it, by the way, the grade.
So, Mr. Probst, can you inform me what would be required by the Cottonwood Airport in order to enable bigger planes to come into Cottonwood Airport? What are the measures that we would need to see?
Typically, you would look at weight-bearing capacity for the runway, we haven't designed anything, we haven't even gone through NEPA clearances, the environmental clearances for the runway extension. The 100% plans for the taxiway lengthen it because it doesn't go with the full length of the runway. Currently, aircraft have to depart off the taxiway, onto the ramp, to get to the north end of the runway. It also eliminates two taxiway access points directly to the runway in violation of the FAA standard for access to a runway. So, we're a long way away from extending the runway, it would be nice if we got FAA money to do the taxiway, which is really more of a drainage issue than a reconstruction of the taxiway. But the jets are here, we're getting Flex jets and Net jets already.
So, Mr. Wagnan mentioned that Chapter Five of the Implementation Plan of the Master Plan refers to a design of a runway extension. In addition to increasing the weight-bearing capacity of the runway, is that also another measure that would be required for the bigger jets to come in?
When we do the engineering, after we clear the environmental, doing the environmental assessment, the engineers would look at all of the FAA standards for different aircraft design group, as well as the different aircraft. I can tell you, from having flown jets a lot, this airport is never going to be a big turbojet airport. We already get King Airs, and we're getting the turbojets now, but you're never going to see big jets coming to Cottonwood.
Could I ask, what is the relationship between Dibble and Associates and PaveX?
There is no relationship, Dibble designed moving the windsock, they also designed the taxiway project, they are, simply are on-call engineers, and will represent the city as our construction managers. PaveX would be hired to do the work based on the finance department's bidding process that they went through, and they were the lowest bidder and the most responsive.
Can you, do you have any idea how long this construction project will take?
Depending on whether, it shouldn't take more than 30 to 45 days.
Can I circle back to the design of the runway extension and also the reference to making the fence lower? What are the purposes of doing those projects?
The runway extension would simply be a capacity thing, it won't change the fleet mix, in my opinion, having done this for 30-plus years and flying, we're not going to see big jets based on 4,700 feet of runway. It doesn't get any wider, the taxiway doesn't get any wider with the taxiway project, and the fence, I'd have to go back and look, but there's probably a six-foot fence that needs to be four feet, somewhere that's not a security issue.
So you're saying the runway needs to be longer because there's more planes that will be coming in?
No, it's just, frankly, what it would do is allow airplanes to take on more fuel or more passengers when the weather's hot. 535 feet doesn't get you to any magic number, 5,000 feet is the magic number, we're never going to get there.
5,000 feet is the magic number for what, please?
For Net jets and Flex jets to bring Challenger jets, 35,000-pound jets in, for insurance, that's, 5,000 is an insurance number.
Can I respond to that, please?
Yes?
The plans right now for the length of the runway will be to use declared distances. Basically, for us, that means they're going to make the whole stretch a runway, you're not going to have overruns on either end, and they have, will name them different names. We will reach 4,000, let me get my glasses on, we, the longest we can make our runway is 4,787 feet. Using declared distances, and this was discussed with the FAA in previous years, would they allow us to do this? They said yes, so what that does is that tells any jet, any pilot, that the manufacturer says you need 5,000 feet to land and take off. If we use declared distances, we're basically telling them, the FAA says it's okay for you to try and land on our 4,787-foot runway. So we're pretending that it's 5,000 feet with the FAA's permission.
Mr. Probst?
I disagree with that.
You get the last word, we're done at that point.
On the airport layout plan that was approved and adopted 2023, there are declared distances. The longest was the length that Mr. Wagnan just gave you. Just because there are declared distance, take off a distance, take off distance available, and take off runway available, doesn't get you to 5,000, trust me, that does not happen. Pilots are not going to say, oh, there's 4,700 feet, so I'm going to use it as 5,000, doesn't happen.
Okay, thank you, gentlemen, thank you so much. Okay, taking these two points, these two resolutions, one at a time, do I have a motion on number six of our list, which is regarding the Dibble and Associates Consulting Engineers for the amount of $57,508 for the segmented circle and windsock?
I move to approve Task Order Number Six for Construction Management of the Segmented Circle and Primary Windsock Relocation with Dibble and Associates Consulting Engineers Incorporated, and to authorize the city manager to execute said task order on behalf of the city in an amount not to exceed $57,508.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, next is the consideration of possible approval of the award of the contract resulting from the invitation for bids for the segmented circle and primary windsock relocation to PaveX Corporation in an amount not to exceed $207,378.
I move to award the contract for construction of the segmented circle and primary windsock relocation to PaveX Corp. with compensation in an amount not to exceed $207,378, and to authorize the city manager to execute said contract on behalf of the city.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, I believe we have addressed all of the items on the consent agenda.
Madam Mayor, may I make a suggestion that we move item three up to the beginning so that the young people can-
Get to their schoolwork.
Get to their schoolwork.
Thank you. Yes, under new business, that's entirely possible if council approves.
Yes.
Are we in agreement?
I'd hate to delay their homework, so yeah, let's move it.
Yeah, I know, right? We're worried about you guys, got to get that homework done.
Good evening, Mayor, Council, am I correct, and we are going to move this to item one then?
Yes, we're looking at Resolution Number 3356, a resolution of the Mayor and Council of the City of Cottonwood, Yavapai County, Arizona, appointing youth commission members and establishing their terms of office.
Good evening again, Madam Mayor and Council, Jack Teal, your Community Services Director, and I'm here tonight to ask for the appointment, or reappointment of, and the appointment of new commissioners to our Cottonwood Youth Advisory Commission. Last year, we had a commission of 13, four of our youth commissioners have graduated and are doing great things in life, and so that left four seats available to be filled this year. So we are recommending nine of the returning commissioners be reappointed, and then four new commissioners appointed in their place. For one of the first times, we have all of our commission here tonight, that includes the new commissioners we are requesting appointment of, too. This appointment would be from today's date through August 31st of next year, which carries us through the Leagues of Cities and Towns Youth Commission Day, and so that would be our request tonight, and I'm happy to answer any questions you may have. I did pose the question if anybody would like to talk, and they've all politely declined, but it's something we can do if you'd like to hear from them.
Anybody have any questions or comments?
I just want to say that they do a lot of work, and I'm very proud of all the work that they do for the, all the events we have, the showing that they did at the conference, and it's unbelievable that these young people have as much time as they do to support the city, because I know they all have extra things to do, so applause to all of them for all their hard work and everything they do. I don't think I've been to an event where there wasn't somebody from the youth council there helping, so.
Yeah, thank you, they've done a great job, they really are a special group of young people, we really appreciate your service.
Would it be possible for the two, or for the four new members to come forward so we can at least see who they are?
Absolutely, I'd like to call Mr. Corby Rice up here, I'd like to call Ms. Hogard, I'd like to call Preston, and then Mr. Valdez, please come up here and join me. Would you guys like to introduce yourself?
Good evening, Council, my name's Dawson Rice, and I was recently appointed.
Hello, I'm Sarah Hogard.
Hello, Preston Heffner.
Hello, Christian Valdez.
Great, thank you all for being here, it's great to see you.
Yeah, thank you for your service.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Could they all stand so we can see them?
Yeah, can we get all of our youth commission up here real quick? Will you, Ms. Dana? Let's spread out here, guys. Madam Mayor and Council, this is your youth commission, assuming that you approve their appointments tonight.
Thank you, it's great to see you all, thanks so much for being here, it's great that you came out for this.
So I will make a motion to adopt Resolution Number 3356, Appointing Members to the Cottonwood Youth Advisory Commission.
I'll second it.
Could we do a roll call vote for that, please?
Councilmember DeWilles?
Yes.
Councilmember Dowell?
Yes.
Councilmember Marks?
Yes.
Councilmember Mosley?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Coats?
Yes.
And Mayor Shaw?
Yes.
And that motion carries?
Okay, so first, under new business, we have interview, an interview of applicant for the Historic Preservation Commission.
Good evening again, Council, tonight I'm before you for a possible interview of an applicant for the Historic Preservation Commission. The city recently advertised three vacancies on that commission, we did receive only one application, so it hasn't been through the blind review. It was advertised through our social media, our website, flyers, and through, and on our website as well, sorry, lost my train of thought there for a minute. Tonight, I'm requesting that council conduct a formal interview with Mr. Chana, who is present this evening, and to allow council the opportunity to engage with him directly. Mr. Chana meets the qualifications to serve on this commission, as he is a resident of the City of Cottonwood and currently owns CDG Land Management Company. His application is included in your agenda packet for this evening. This commission is, consists of seven members, five members must be residents of the City of Cottonwood, while the remaining two may be non-residents with substantial ties to the city, owning a business, property ownership, just substantial ties to the city somehow. So, while professional experience in architecture, planning, history, archaeology, or construction is highly desirable, it is not a requirement to be appointed to this commission. Appointing qualified candidates like Mr. Chana ensures the commission can continue to fulfill its statutory duties and advances the city's preservation efforts and goals. This is not an action item this evening, it is just an interview of Mr. Chana, and I can, and I will bring this back to the next council meeting if council so desires. There is no associated cost for this appointment, and at this time, unless you have any questions of me, I would invite you to proceed with the interview of Mr. Chana. I'll get those to you in just a second.
Ms. Mays, we can make some up, I'm sure.
What? I'm sure you can make up all three questions. And this is Mr. David Chana.
Honored to be here, thank you. I have a prepared statement. For the Honorable Mayor and members of the Cottonwood City Council, thank you for the opportunity to introduce myself, as I seek appointment to the Historic Preservation Commission. I'm a longtime Verde Valley resident and community volunteer with practical experience in property stewardship, permitting logistics, and community-facing program work. I would be honored to contribute my skills and local perspective to the commission's efforts to preserve Cottonwood's heritage while supporting sensible, compatible reuse. In this past decade, I've managed operations, procurement, and permitting for a small portfolio of residential and commercial properties. That work requires careful attention to building materials, site context, and- That work requires careful attention to building materials, site context, and municipal code. It has taught me to translate technical requirements into clear, usable guidance for property owners and contractors. I regularly draft project documentation, reconcile budgets, coordinate inspections, and mediate conflict between tenants, property owners, and contractors for ideal outcomes. Outside of property work, I author community-focused research. Most recently, I've developed a short-term rental policy paper focusing on the Verde Valley and surrounding areas. I am experimenting with a food truck activation. I title Vendorama. It's a neighborhood vendor program where I intend to maintain vendor agreements, create site rules, and have a public-facing food experience. I've also volunteered in local food distribution operations for the New Hope and Manzanita Outreach Food Banks, which sharpened my process design and volunteer skills. My cross-cultural background includes overseas study as Cottonwood Rotary-sponsored youth exchange student to Thailand. I also have advanced international business study through Northern Arizona University and various work experience abroad throughout Asia. This makes me especially attentive to cultural context, nuance, and positive communication. If brought on, I would strive to listen first, explain rationale in plain language, and propose solutions that protect historic character while allowing property owners reasonable flexibility. I come prepared to learn any required preservation standards, and I'm happy to support the city in any way you need.
Mr. Chana, thank you for all of that. We were able to read through many of your qualifications as we came to the meeting tonight. You've essentially answered all of these questions, but if you'll indulge us, we'll go ahead and ask you anyway, and you can give us perhaps, you know, just brief answers to the questions that we have. If we want to begin with Councilmember DeWellis asking the first question, we've only got three questions for you, so.
Okay, I will do my best.
It will give us a chance to complete our form, which is our sole object here.
Okay.
It's going to be easy on you, I promise. What do you want to, why do you want to serve on the Historic Preservation Commission?
I grew up in this area, and I'm, I've come back after traveling for a while. I'm well-invested here, and I would like to just take a role in keeping the area together and supporting, I think what you call heritage tourism, right?
Thank you.
So, Mr. Chana, your next question, what specific experience do you have that qualifies you to serve on the Historic Preservation Commission?
My goodness. Well, I am, again, very savvy to the local community, and I'm very sensitive to its needs. I have served in volunteer capacities from Rotary Club involvement to university clubs, and I've worked with various small businesses. So I'm used to managerial staff meetings. I'm familiar with parliamentary-style organization. I think it's called Roberts Rules is where it was first introduced, I think as far back as like FBLA and early Rotary, so I feel I could step right in.
Thank you.
The last question, what do you want to accomplish as a Historic Preservation Commissioner?
I would like to learn more about what you call COAs, just community guidelines, and what exactly the process is for keeping the community looking as good as we do. I think what we have in Old Town in terms of exterior facades and the surrounding areas is worthy of keeping together, and I would just like to have a hand in that.
Very good, thank you.
Okay.
That's all of our questions. Thanks so much.
Thank you.
Hang on, wait, just give me a second.
Of course.
I don't write that fast.
Have two seconds, Mary.
I don't write enough.
Can we start the timer, please?
Okay. Okay, I'm ready.
Okay, and with that, as I said, I will bring that for appointment back to a future council meeting if that is council's desire.
Okay, very good, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, next, we have an interview of applicant for the Board of Adjustment.
Well, good evening, Council. Good to see you tonight. Just kidding, kind of feel like I've been up here a lot. So I bring forward an interview of Ms. Felicia Coats this evening as an applicant for a vacancy on our city's Board of Adjustment. Again, this is only an interview tonight, there's no action necessary. The Board of Adjustments is a five-member body comprised of Cottonwood residents appointed by the city council to serve staggered three-year terms. It functions as a quasi-judicial entity, hearing variance requests and appeals of decisions made by the zoning administrator. Procedures for this board are outlined in the Arizona Revised Statutes, and training is provided to all of our applicants. Currently, there are three vacancies on this board, all due to term expirations. These openings have been advertised three times through 2025, resulting in one application from Ms. Felicia Coats. Because she is the sole applicant, again, the blind review process did not take place. Ms. Coats is a familiar face to this council, as she serves as our vice mayor currently. She does reside within the incorporated city limits and meets all eligible requirements to serve on this board. Appointing a qualified member is essential to maintaining a quorum and ensuring the board can carry out its statutory responsibilities. It is important to note that any appeals of the board's decisions are directed to the Superior Court and not to this city council, which will lessen any potential conflict in having a city council member on the Board of Adjustments. Ms. Coats is obviously present this evening, thank you, and ready to participate in the interview process, and unless you have any questions for staff, I would now invite Vice Mayor Coats to the podium so that council may engage with her directly.
It'd be much more fun to have Vice Mayor Coats ask the questions from the dais and run up to the podium and have applicant Coats add to it.
Can we do that? That'd be fun. We'll start the questioning with you, though, Councilmember Dell, and go down the line.
Are you prepared for this?
Hit me.
Okay, Ms. Coats, why do you want to serve on the Board of Adjustment?
I want to serve on the Board of Adjustment because there are three vacancies on the Board of Adjustment, and it's been advertised three times, and former acting city manager Tom Whitmer explained that to me, and he's like, "We can't get anybody to apply." I'm like, "Okay, I'll do it." So honestly, that's why.
Thank you.
What specific experience do you have that qualifies you to serve on the Board of Adjustments?
So I am not a zoning expert, but I am a fact-based person, as I think some of you know. I make decisions based on facts, and I have an established track record for objectivity and fairness in decision-making. I had a professional career in regulatory affairs, so I am accustomed to interpreting regulation and things like ordinances, which could be helpful when interpreting zoning ordinance. So yeah, I think that's it in a nutshell.
Thank you.
Be gentle.
Come up with a tough one. What do you want to accomplish as a member of the Board of Adjustment?
I simply want to fulfill the obligations of my role in, as city clerk Mays said, you know, to respond to appeals and to hear requests for variances from the zoning ordinance if this board ever meets, which, as I looked in the track record, it sounds like they never meet, so I've got a cushy role if I am appointed, so. Anything else?
Yeah, any other questions? I don't hear any, so thank you.
Thank you, Council. That's all I have for you this evening, and I can bring her back for a possible appointment at a future council meeting as well.
Thank you. Okay, thank you. Okay, the last item on, under new business, is the consideration and possible approval of the 2025 to 2027 Historic Preservation Strategic Plan as required under section 2.110.030 of the Cottonwood Municipal Code. Good evening, Ms. Hayden.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, Council. I'm Tina Hayden, Senior Planner for City of Cottonwood, and also designated as a staff liaison for the Historic Preservation Commission, and I am presenting the 2025-2027 Historic Preservation Strategic Plan. The request tonight is consideration for approval of the strategic plan. At the July HP Commission meeting, my commission voted to recommend approval to council of this. Just a couple of details, a previous version, the 2024-2026 Strategic Plan, was brought to council on August 6th of last year, to the older council. It was tabled then in anticipation of the incoming council. The municipal code here, this is what tasked the Historic Preservation Commission with creating that strategic plan. This plan communicates objectives and initiatives needed to achieve those objectives, and the vision, goals, and objectives are derived from our 2024 Cottonwood General Plan. The next four slides are the strategic objectives with anywhere from one to two initiatives. I'm just going to read through the title, give you guys a moment to skim through my summaries of the initiatives. If you have any questions, feel free to stop me before I proceed to the next slide. So strategic objective one is to retain Old Town's vitality and unique character. And I'll switch to the next slide, if that's okay with you. Strategic objective two, to enhance Old Town streetscapes to provide a high-quality, walkable environment. I would like to point out that we have initiatives two A and two B. They're somewhat redundant, but they do identify two different plans. I just have them combined here for a summary. Proceed to the next slide. Strategic objective three, provide preservation assistance to owners of historic properties. Some of this does focus on our 50/50 small grant fund, as well as providing educational materials, and lastly, increasing the HPC presence on our social media. And the last slide here, strategic objective four, to maintain Cottonwood's status as a certified local government. We were designated CLG in 2014 by the State Historic Preservation Office. This is to maintain that status and also submit for the annual grant that is provided to CLGs. That concludes my presentation. I'm ready for any questions you may have. I also have our HP Vice Chair, Patricia Monell, available if you have any questions for her.
So I wanted to make a statement, and I had a question. So, Ms. Hayden, I wanted to first state that I appreciate the clear statement of strategies and initiatives in the plan. I thought it was well-done. I especially endorse the HPC's strategy to be involved as an advisor to the Planning and Zoning Commission and for our plans for the Old Town Master Plan and Old Town Parking Study. My question is on strategic initiative 1A, which in brief proposes the establishment of historic overlay districts. And my question is, will you be coming before council with the general concept for historic overlay districts before proceeding to executing against defining those historic overlay districts? Do you understand what I'm asking?
Yes, thank you, Vice Mayor Coats. The Historic Preservation Commission does serve an advisory capacity, not just to the Planning and Zoning Commission, but also to the city council. Any item, we did choose the word propose as that leading word for that initiative. We would bring that to you guys as a proposal to get your discussion and input on that.
So on the general concept of what are historic overlay districts, what benefits, what potential disadvantages there are, that sort of thing? Is that what you're saying, or am I putting words in your mouth?
Thank you for, you know, clarifying your question. Regarding in our zoning ordinance, section 310, and then also the accompanying section 201 definitions, we do define historic district and historic preservation district. So we do have what those two different districts are and the process for establishing a historic preservation district, which is that zoning overlay district. Anytime we're doing a zoning overlay district, it is subject to council approval via ordinance. I'm hoping that answers your question, but again, clarify if I miss the mark.
So what I hear you to say, I think, is that you would come before council with your actual plan of where you propose to put the historic overlay district?
Correct.
Okay, and what I was asking was, before you do all that work, is it possible to have a discussion with council on, kind of educating us on what are historic overlay districts and, you know, what's involved and what does it mean for our community?
Okay, most definitely. If you will recall, we did have a joint commission meeting, or council and Historic Preservation Commission meeting in February at, you know, the commission's or the council's behest. We could definitely schedule another joint meeting to illuminate any plans that the commission has before they formally propose a district.
That would be my preference. I'd be interested in hearing what others have to say on that.
That would be very agreeable, yes.
Ms. Hayden, is there currently, there currently is an overlay district, is that right?
Thank you for that question, Councilmember Mosley. There is a historic district that's indicated on the National Register of Historic Places. It is not a zoning overlay district.
All right.
As compared to, we would refer to it as a historic preservation district if it was a zoning overlay. We do not have one currently.
All right, thank you.
Ms. Hayden, can you go into more detail about what the purpose of doing the inventory survey of commercial buildings along North Main Street is?
Thank you, Councilmember Marks. The State Historic Preservation Office, who designated us as that certified local government, does, they are mandated by state act to do survey and inventory, to maintain historic properties, and as we are a, I guess, kind of a offshoot of them, they task us with that on the local level, and they do provide that grant opportunity that does assist with survey and inventorying.
And is there, is there a certain percentage, a number of buildings that need to be considered historic to maintain certification? What's the intended outcome of the survey?
So as far as that percentage, because I believe that was brought up at our February joint meeting, that percentage actually pertains to the National Register listing. In order to have a, we have our Cottonwood Commercial Historic District. In order to continue to be listed on the National Register, we have to have at least 51% of the properties contributing. 51% of the properties contributing. As far as for CLG, I will have to verify before I make any statements that there's a percentage requirement.
Okay, and from our most recent survey, do you know what our percentage is?
From what I can recall, it sits in the 70% range.
Thank you. And on the historic property tours as the main funding source for the 50/50 grants, how much money do we, does the commission raise through those tours generally?
Thank you for that, Councilmember Marks. I will say that, you know, COVID did throw a damper in that event, and then last year, I'd say it was our comeback tour. We, I think, deposited $600, $700 into the account, and I would ask, thinking we're right about $7,000 in that account, and the grants that we do provide are up to $3,500 matching per annual, per year.
Thank you.
Any other comments or questions?
You know, when I read through this, and, you know, they use words like propose, conduct, serve, collaborate, I keep thinking, now, who's going to do all of that? I mean, this is the commission saying that this is what they plan to do, right? Is that correct?
Yes, Councilmember Mosley. The Historic Preservation Commission is a working commission, so they do act on these initiatives. There are times where staff, you know, as a staff liaison, we step in and help out with some of the items, such as the property tour. It's my job to boss them around the day of the event and tell them what to do.
All right, thank you.
And going back to the tours, I know, you know, like during the Walking on Main, you see, you know, there's a lot of basically advertising for the tours. Are there, like, rack cards for the visitor center? How else would a visitor know that these tours are available?
Thank you, Councilmember Marks. Right now, the tours are solely focused to walking on Main. I will say, I think one of the items in the strategic plan we have here is to actually establish a walking tour, but what our commissioners do is we print out maps because the tour allows for a guided tour or just a self-guided walking tour. We do provide our commissioners with maps so that they can go and deliver those to some of the businesses on Main Street, and then the day of, we also are handing out those maps for the self-guided tour.
Thank you.
If not, I'll move to approve the 2025-2027 Historic Preservation Strategic Plan.
All second.
Could we do the roll call, please?
Councilmember DeWillis?
Yes.
Councilmember Dell?
Yes.
Councilmember Marks?
Yes.
Councilmember Mosley?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Coats?
Yes.
And Mayor Shaw?
Yes.
And that motion carries.
One of the things I have not yet done, and there are some wording variations in the resolutions from the original agenda, and so if I could, I'll read the resolutions into the record. Under unfinished business, we had Resolution Number 3353, a resolution of the mayor and city council of the city of Cottonwood, Yavapai County, Arizona, appointing Beth Kennedy as a member of the Planning and Zoning Commission and establishing her term of office. Resolution Number 3358, a resolution of the mayor and city council of the city of Cottonwood, Yavapai County, Arizona, appointing Kathy Hellman as a member of the Planning and Zoning Commission and establishing her term of office. Excuse me. Under the consent agenda, Resolution Number 3354, a resolution of the mayor and city council of the city of Cottonwood, Yavapai County, Arizona, reappointing Robert Rothrock as a member of the Planning and Zoning Commission and establishing his term of office. Resolution Number 3355, a resolution of the mayor and city council of the city of Cottonwood, Yavapai County, Arizona, reappointing Daniel Camella as a member of the Planning and Zoning Commission and establishing his term of office. Resolution Number 3359, a resolution of the mayor and city council of the city of Cottonwood, Arizona, reappointing E. Lynn Rorden as an associate city magistrate and establishing her term of office. Resolution Number 3360, a resolution of the mayor and city council of the city of Cottonwood, Yavapai County, Arizona, approving the Yavapai County Superior Court list of appointed justices for the peace pro tempore for the use in the Cottonwood Municipal Court as needed. Resolution Number 3361, a resolution of the mayor and city council of the city of Cottonwood, Yavapai County, Arizona, approving and authorizing the mayor to execute an intergovernmental agreement with the state of Arizona, acting by and through its Department of Transportation for Main Street preservation and sidewalk improvements, and authorizing the expenditure of funds as provided therein. And finally, under new business. Resolution Number 3356, a resolution of the mayor and council of the city of Cottonwood, Yavapai County, Arizona, appointing youth commission members and establishing their terms of office. He's still awake? Good job. That's it for the resolutions. Next on the agenda is councilmember request for future agenda items. Anybody have one?
The young woman who spoke about the flock cameras, I'm wondering if we might get some more information on how they're used here in this community?
That's, yeah, thank you. Good thought. Any other agenda items you would like to add? Last is claims and adjustments for September 7, 2025.
I move to approve the claims report for September 2, 2025.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
The last item is adjournment.
I'd like to make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you, everyone.